Good evening. Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of Winchester Town Forum, taking place from the Walton Suite, Winchester Guildhall, 6.30. councillor Mike Crass, Chairperson of this meeting. This meeting has been ordered, recorded, livestreamed, will be available on the council's YouTube channel. Some titles are available. Device on how to turn this on is set out on our website. If you join us online, please turn your camera and microphone off till your item occurs. Can everyone please ensure mobile phones are on silent? Lastly, please can I remind members to use their microphones and speak directly and not turn away when speaking to enable your comments to be picked up. So, in the agenda, Claire, do we have any apologies, please?
Yes, apologies for absence received from councillors Edwards, Westwood, Green, and a late apology later on from councillor Tom. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Disclosures of interest, please.
Yes, I've needed to declare an interest. It's a personal but non-preditional interest as a member of the county councils. The issues on the agenda do relate to county councillors.
Chairperson's announcement. There's a couple of short ones. One is the formal groups. They are informal groups, but I have asked the chairs of those groups to present reports going forward on the activities of those groups. Those groups are really designed to enable councillors to engage with officers, to support officers and to inspect what's at work in the public. And councillor Edwards has done a very nice report, quoted in the pack to detail activities of that group. Also includes a nice entry input from Senator John Turton. But do encourage people to take a look at that report in particular in future other reports coming from. It's really designed to increase transparency of those groups and facilitate what has been verbal reports at the end of the meeting. My other announcement is that I'm very immersed in Winchesters at the moment, having been to the 878 experience today. I highly recommend to everybody. So, moving on, items from minutes of previous meetings. Do we sign that off as a correct record? Any points on that?
Agreed.
Very much. So, to public participation. Claire, we have a couple of public.
Two chairs, so registered speakers, that's Tim Powell, pardon the closing, Evan?
Yes, I can't see Mr at the moment. Perhaps we'll view when he arrives. And Mr Ian Tate, we spoke earlier that you'd like to speak. Promptly along to item number six, town account media, DF313, aged in the PAC 13. Darren for this one. Okay, very good. Very good. So, we are asked to do this, to identify any budget issues in advance of recommending a town account budget to Cabinet in January. Any feedback to Cabinet? Open it up for questions. councillor Lenny.
Chairman, it might be, although I wasn't expecting to, it might be helpful if I said a few words, a member of the town accounts group which has had a look at this. It's quite clear, as you look at the paper, that the medium term financial strategy shows a considerable worsening in the financial position of the town account. Reasons for that are very straightforward. This time last year, we were projecting contract inflation at three and a half per cent for the year. We're now looking at seven per cent and an increase in utilities of 25 per cent, which is coming out at 100. Clearly, those kind of figures have a significant impact, not only on the town account or this current year, but also going forward. We did recognise last year that we did have to look very carefully at the town funds going forward because we were looking in a few years' time at having inadequate reserves to cover unexpected items of expenditure. I think this year has shown why we do need to keep reserves, even though we do have essentially the backing of the city council in terms of having funding available to us if necessary. That's, it's certainly not a desirable position to be in going forward. This has left us with what are going to be some very difficult decisions going forward in terms of our expenditure. There are a number of options listed in the paper in order to reduce that, both in terms of discretionary spending, which could be reduced, also in reprofiling our capital expenditure, in particular on the playgrounds, looking at either borrowing to fund that or reprofiling when we do various improvements. We do have a number of playgrounds which are currently either in the process of being refurbished or being consulted on, but certainly by lengthening the periods, essentially making the playgrounds last a bit longer, we can reduce our expenditure over time. The other thing that we're looking at, which I think would be a sensible way forward, regardless of our financial position, is that traditionally we've undertaken whole playground refurbishments of the town, essentially taking the equipment and replacing it, and a much more sustainable way to go forward is to look at what actually needs replacing in each playground, rather than considering total redesign each time. So, again, that's an area where we can look at expenditure. Right now, clearly, we're not in a position to take those decisions. The level of income that may be available through the town is still uncertain, but certainly in January, we will have to be looking at taking some of those difficult decisions going forward.
Very good. Thank you councillor Lenny. councillor Radcliffe.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you councillor Lenny for the explanation. Difficult times, two questions, one on income generation, given the escalating inflation rates, the impact of that on our budget, and I'm thinking in particular the capital costs of the pavilions, the new sporting pavilions, sporting facilities, which take up quite a chunk of money. Is there any scope to claw back additional costs over time through user charges, ship, commercial use, other means that we haven't fully? And then second question on potential savings, there's £50,000 that's identified as a potential saving, recreation grounds and open spaces. My question is, is this the money that we earmarked for a technical study, head of improvement in North? If it is, then my understanding is that in fact that money has already been committed. It should probably take it off the table.
councillor Lenny.
Thank you. I think it's certainly the case that we will have to be looking at income generation. Certainly, it's anticipated that when we have really nice new facilities, both of which will have community space available, which doesn't exist in our current facilities, that we will be able to not only hire them out more often, but certainly charge a bit more for those facilities as well. At the same time, we'll obviously have to balance that with our desire to maximise the use of them for sporting facilities, but I think we do need to look at benchmarking and certainly we do need to look at sponsorship. I know the issue of naming rights for the KDV was raised, and I really don't see why that shouldn't be.
Absolutely. Mr Kennedy. We moved pretty rapidly and we're actually on paper right now. Councillor Lenny's done a fantastic job in a bit of an overview. Further is needed, but was there anything in particular you wanted to draw our attention to?
Well, I'll go through a quick high level summary. So, yes, so the paper you have before you is giving sort of a high level overview and options, setting the week's budget for next year and showing the medium term position. We raised in the last town forum, the town is facing some challenges next year because of proposals that have come forward. So, in appendix one, whose growth proposals are now within that appendix, that shows the position, including the growth proposal. Summary within week nine gives a really high level position showing the current. So, in terms of 23, 24, there's a shortfall of £1,000. That rises to £7,000. There is a highlight, the areas that flagged for review by the town informal accounts group, including review of the play area refurbishment programme, review of capital funding, play area refurbishment programme, and review of discretionary budgets, consideration of the year, respect to the overall referendum, and then a general review of season charges, recreation grounds and open spaces. I find the most significant picture for the town. I think that covers all the areas in the paper, and it was anticipated at this meeting, the informal accounts group, an overall discussion with the four areas. I agree, we need to have final proposals reviewed, not the net.
Thank you, Mr Kennedy. I think that's the overview and content of this. We just start with a question from Brad Cooper, particularly around income generation. If anyone was able to respond. Councillor Radcliffe, did you get all your questions answered? Anything to ask Darren at this point?
Thank you, Chair. Just on the specific question of £1,000 identified in recreation account, that I presented the impression that maybe that was the money for the study done in North Wool. My understanding is that money has in fact been committed. Sorry, where was that? Age 18 and the discretionary budgets. So, that's the baseline budget that was put in.
Darren, if I may, is that the additional funds we've put in because of the increased costs as opposed to a specific fee feasibility?
No, it was a brand new baseline, £50,000 per annum budget to progress thinly, additional requirements.
In the budget year on year. So, it is a.
councillor Ferguson.
Darren, I know last year when we looked at the budget and we, it was set slightly higher, trying to allow revenue to provide. I wonder if you could comment to what extent that's been followed down and or whether it remains this far. Secondly, if we were to look, would that cover the whole?
So, yes, so the preset was set in order to give some, well, in the knowledge of additional expenditure area, main addition to the budget was the £50,000. That was flexibility in order to be able to progress whose additional expenditure as and when. Preset was set. Terms of 7.00 per year of the additional income generated by that. And so, maintenance, the assumption. That 4% would generate 44,000, 7,000. Extra to the. Some way to come. Yes, so at a high level, obviously, we're going into more detail further, just in terms of a really high position I've shown in the medium term, then an increase third balance or such, but in third balance. That change and that's factored in over that for the year. To review the. Three to time.
councillor Lenny, please.
Right, thank you, Chair.
apologies. councillor Tipper Cooper, please.
Thank you, Chair. I think on this, going to page 18, items in section B, I think the paper has asked or suggests that the options are going to be considered further before running the budget. It's difficult to comment in too much detail about the four items, the grant bidding process, theatre royal, recreation ground. I think about a bit more detail as to exactly those things are and what benefits those they deliver. And I know, I know, I've a broad idea what things deliver, but have we done a bit of analysis on the impacts of veteran? That is first question. And the second question is, what exactly is the grant bidding process? So, the town has always had a grant budget of 60,000. A few years ago, there was a review of that grant budget. Did that review up 30,000 in the process and it's enabled vision. Well, during, probably partly because of Covid, that budget line has been. Don't need to come back to the forum. Now, that's in usage to be. Same when it has been. Same with the addition. Currently being. That and that annual base, how it can be delivered. Were quite. Effective. Thin relief. See theatre royal, history makes it do so. Of an impact at the current theatre order. Savings. That we can come back with the accounts group.
Thank you, Darren. If I could supplement that perhaps as well as an answer. Correct me as appropriate, but the town forum does have a £60,000 grant budget each year, as Darren was saying. £20,000 goes to the theatre royal, have £7,000 in. Done very well previously in spending. The £33,000 was allocated out funding. That's what we talked about last meeting, to address the fact that we haven't been spending that. So, that's where we were looking to de-allocate the distribution of that small grant, to take more of £33,000 into. Really looking to address the fact that we've not been getting that grant money out. I can understand why the group would suggest that this would be considered. So, I think it's something to look at in terms of the vision delivery and the grants programme, which is. Drive spending. I don't want to get too much into debate, but I do want to. councillor Reach, please.
I just wanted to come with my committee.
Great, yes, please.
Just say that the crowdfunding. Which looks for. Worked in the way that we done that paper. Thank you, Chair, for your.
Anytime, councillor. councillor Reach.
In March 2021, the government published the Bus Back Better Strategy, which promised £3 billion for local bus infrastructure. Since then, we've had two prime ministers and two new transport secretaries, and not a single penny of that funding has reached. Given the pressures we're under and given the increased night bus, the fact that government, promised government help has not materialised, is it only right that we do have a look at making difficult decisions, whether the night bus is value for money and also whether we have the money to invest in our infrastructures such as bus shelters right across this?
Is there a question there?
Is it not right that we look at that difficult decision? Although, I mean, to supplement that, we've heard from councillor Tipper Cooper and any of his response, we've counted feedback in the past, that night buses are very valuable and very welcome and important service. Nevertheless, it is expensive and given the fact how difficult finances are, we not look at this as.
councillor Lenny.
Yeah, with both my transport and town forum hat on. Yes, I think it's absolutely right that we should regularly look at all of these discretionary budgets and say whether we're getting value for money. One point I would make in terms of the night buses, that there is a parish contribution added on to that as well. So it's not just the town forum paying for that night bus service. Certainly when the night bus was introduced, we actually saw an increase in not only the directly funded bus, but in additional buses, paying enough for there to be somebody in the garage later at night, then suddenly other marginal services came possible. So there is a considerable knock on effect, but I think we have to say, well, the town forum bearing like, should we be looking at funding sources? I think, obviously, I can't speak for the county, but I think they too have been very disappointed.
Councillor Todd?
I can speak for the county on this one, and I can tell you, they're absolutely furious. Well, it was a ludicrous exercise in the sense that a huge amount of work was done to create a bus service improvement plan, on the expectation, everybody was led to believe that there was going to be funding across the whole country and about half the people who preferred these enormously detailed pieces of work at a time when bus companies and county councils were under a great deal of pressure, did not receive funding, which was quite in contradiction to everything that we've been led to believe. I think it's safe to say, in fact, I know I've heard it from cabinet members and council officers, that it's impressed. Bit of an understatement.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Any further questions? Just one question from me. It comes to additional tree maintenance. Appendix one. Note that there's forecast included for twenty two, twenty three for additional tree maintenance. Just notice there's there, oh, there's one line for twenty thousand, one line for twenty one thousand eight six four.
Yes, so the additional tree maintenance, there was an additional tree maintenance budget set. We have twenty thousand pounds. And then additional line. Today, you have a spend safety grounds, essentially, you have another twenty one. Because work identified by the tree survey has been particularly into that requirement.
Thank you. So I do, I do have one eye on the subsequent paper, which is about the tree strategy. Does speak to a request of eleven six four future years and a request for twenty one eight six four this year. For that tree paper later. And it's covered here in the budget line item of four, we're saying it's in addition to twenty thousand, it was all expected, albeit it wasn't in the
Yes, so it wasn't included in the additional estimate for the year. There was, it was already identified that the tree survey programme was underway and that there additional works on trees as a direct result of that tree survey. But all significant amount of additional work has been surveyed and was that. Do you have a spend for that is within?
Very good. Thank you for clarifying. Very helpful. So with no other questions, let's move to debate.
Councillor Radcliffe wanted to say something.
Councillor Radcliffe, please.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. I have a, this isn't, it is kind of an observation, but I want someone to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. The town wards that we represent make up the most densely populated, most frequently visited part of the Winchester district. Our infrastructure is the most intensively used structure in this. Concentrated. And yet, it's the only part of the district subjected to strict revenue raising constraints virtue of the fact that our precept must fit within the three percent cap in city council. I'm not sure residents appreciate this, but out in the parishes and market towns, residents pay a local parish precept set at whatever level is needed to pay for maintaining the public rail. Areas. Unlike in the Winchester town area, there's no local cap. And as a result, again, correct me if I'm wrong, places like Alsford or Sparsholt, there's more money to spend per head on maintaining local park playgrounds, for example. We have to spend here in the town area. And that seems unfair and unsustainable, even if the pollution is not necessarily within our but insofar as we can redress the balance to even a limited degree, including through transferring more district funds to the town boards, I would be doing. On potential savings, the night bus, for me, that small contribution delivers a lot of value. Cutting our contribution, I think we know, could put at risk night bus services with implications for public safety and convenience, as well as for the night time economy, hospitality venues in the city centre. So that's the horse economy. The area that worries me most, though, is the, is the town forum's play areas refurbishment programme. I do understand why it's been put on the block. It represents a large chunk of expenditure going forward. But these refurbishments are something we have promised our residents. They are very much needed. Arguably, in fact, with household budgets under pressure, families taking less day trips and holidays, it's perhaps even more important than ever for children to have access to outdoors play opportunities. I very much hope we can protect that budget. That said, I'm all for looking closely and seeing where we can deliver promised improvements more efficiently, including, as councillor Lernie has described, by looking to repurpose some existing equipment rather than necessarily always replacing everything. And personally, I'd also be in favour of paying for the playground improvements from borrowing to be repaid over the lifetime of the These are once in a generation investments in community infrastructure. Arguably, borrowing is the more logical source of funding for those kind of investments, rather than taking money out of our very limited reserves. We did adopt this approach. We would, of course, at a stroke, both protect the play areas programme and relieve pressure in other areas of the budget as well.
Thank you, councillor Radcliffe. Councillor Ferguson?
I'd just like to add to the debate in regards of the playground budgets. I'm of a similar view that the playgrounds are probably one of the only places where it's free to be. Recreational sort of activity where anyone can go, you don't have to pay, they're available at all others. We've had a debate before at the town forum about, do they cater for lagers? Do you have muggers? We do have our skate park. Initially, not all of them are paid. Some takes they are all important. However, saying that, times are hard, the budgetary pressures that you situation, we can't can't ignore that we are capped on our preset. More able, like a parish council, raise a higher preset to provide the services which our residents will be. So, yes, I feel we do have to review that programme and definitely look borrowing, I'm not against borrowing, if it's serviceable. I don't want us just to look at our existing programme and say, given what we said we were going to do, what should we delay? What should we do slightly differently? What I'd like us to do, maybe I think Mr Kennedy pointed to, if we were to borrow it, might as actually look at our play parks, cross the piece and say, do they meet our community needs? Are they still fit for purpose? When we look at our play parks, you might think, oh, yes, currently there's a play park there, but actually in that spot it could be a space for playing, but it might be something different. But to me, if we're going to review, it can't be quick and dirty. Proper review, saying, are these fit for purposes, fit for community needs? And again, that might fit with a wider strategy where we're looking at helping strategy. But if we are going to look, let's
Thank you, councillor Ferguson. And councillor Lernie, please.
Thank you. Yes, I have to agree about the town precept. I mean, it has got increasingly out of kilter with the precept of the larger, other large settlements in the district, which are charging twice as much as we are. So it's not surprising that we struggle to maintain the quality of some of our facilities. And that is, as a consequence, essentially of government capping, in particular, when they froze council tax a number of years back, over a number of, for a number of years, of which, while it benefited our people in short term, has clearly impaired our ability to raise money. It is always a problem where you have these year on year increases. Whenever they're, they're limited, you can't say, well, this year it's going to be zero, and then if we have to, we can double it next year. We're just not in that position. With regard to the play parks, I I agree, they are essential. A number of years ago, I was involved in actually putting the expenditure on recreation, on the play parks into the core budget, because for quite a long time, they were actually paid for entirely from developer funds as and when it was available. It was an entirely unsatisfactory state of affairs. So actually, we're in a better position with regard to parks where a number of years ago, but they are very important for our local families. And I think it's, well, we might extend their lives for an added year or two, that we don't stretch it out too
Thank you, councillor Lernie. And councillor Todd, please.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of well made points in this debate. It's absolutely true that people in the city on average pay less for their parish contribution than people in the rest of the district. The precept, I think, is seventy three pounds for, on average, in the rest of the district, it's ninety six pounds twenty five. That's, that's a big financial difference. Now, obviously, we get some efficiencies by being a large area, but it's also striking, as others have mentioned, that Alsford's charging, you know, nearly twice as much, hundred and thirty eight pounds. Bishopswaltham is charging more than twice as much, a hundred and sixty nine pounds. So, you know, that's something we need to be, to be mindful of, although that doesn't necessarily mean that I'm wanting to double that element of council tax with immediate effect. I think everything has to be in scope, but we need to think about the wider impact. And there's two thoughts I'd have as we do that review. One is, we don't just treat play parks in isolation, we look as areas as a whole. How are facilities in a whole area? Rather than, what are we going to do about this particular play park? And then the second thing is, we are mindful of the city council's strategy, which I think we should reflect, that we have gross, we have large, surprisingly large, health inequalities, wellbeing inequalities, educational inequalities in our district, and we are mindful of that when setting our priorities about how to spend and where to spend and where the investment needs to go. We make sure that those communities, where we need to be doing more, to help those communities and to stand alongside those communities and help them thrive, that we are properly reflecting that in our thinking as well. And we don't just treat, we don't forget that we have those wider objectives that we're trying to achieve. So I think it's right that everything's in scope. But my, my request would be, let us not forget the wider objectives that we're working to as we're thinking about our priorities in terms of how and where our money gets spent.
Thank you, councillor. Other contributions? Okay, well, I think that hopefully the informal group and Darren, you feel you've got enough input from the forum this evening. You have very helpfully laid out the issue that needs to be addressed. Some ideas around how we might do that. Both very helpful discussion. Personally, I obviously support everything that's been said, which is very appropriate, I think. Can't see how we can plug the shortfall and through borrowing for the open spaces vision. That does seem to be, to me. Certainly, we do need to look at this more strategically. And there will be a big piece of work for you and for others in the group, work towards January and coming forward, budget for next year. So thank you for your work on this very much and hope that you'll continue in January. The object, or the request there was to provide issues, budget issues to consider and give feedback. So I think we've done that well, which then moves us on to item seven. Which is upgrade replacements to bus shelters and the opportunity for Mr Ian Tate to public participation, if you would. So, Mr Tate, you know, the the drill, you have three minutes and the clock should be coming up shortly.
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to address the town forum. I'm speaking on the paper regarding I have to confess that I cannot recall a previous occasion when a paper on bus shelters has been presented to a council committee, certainly not the town forum, although I may and note that the report mentions the town is responsible for sixty two bus shelters across the five wards, yet there are many more bus shelters in the town area. So why is this forum only responsible for sixty two? Many years ago, a resident in Hanover Lodge, St Cross Road, lobbied me for a bus shelter on the corner of Ranner Road and Edgar Road, because many older people from Hanover Lodge use that stop. All we could ever achieve in those days was bench. What are the current criteria for getting a bus shelter in the council's website doesn't give any clues. It's really difficult to find the bus shelter form, which has no explanation. I was unaware that the council had a budget for new bus shelters and assumed it was a county responsibility to supply them. A local resident, who some members here will know, regularly raises the issues of the three bus shelters on the south side of City Road, which he feels are excessive and detract from the street scene. He also argues that only two shelters are actually required. The third one could be deployed elsewhere. This was picked up by the Hampshire Chronicle last December, but it was battered around from Clear Channel, County and the city. There are still three bus shelters on the south side of City. Jury Street has re Jury Street has three bus stops, only one bus shelter. Why is that? One of the most popular bus shelters in the city is outside of the hospital, as I walk past it many times every day. The bus shelter doesn't meet the capacity of people using it. So there's lots of confusion here. Sadly, we regularly see bus shelters vandalised, and does the budget of ten thousand pounds cover that? There's a bus shelter at the opposite Kings Road, King's School, which has been recently vandalised. Will it be automatically resolved? Councillor Scott would be aware of that, no doubt. As someone who uses buses on a regular basis, with increasingly changeable weather caused by climate change, sudden, heavy and unanticipated downpours, I mean that having bus shelters can be very beneficial and important if we want to encourage people to use budgets. Therefore, it's an interesting paper, but I am perplexed, and I do think it may benefit from research-like being put on this. I did happen to see Sarah Davies in the town, so I did quiz her, and it's unfortunate she's not here to answer many of those questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr Tate. councillor Lernery, you're bringing this paper to us this evening, perhaps ask you to answer some of those questions as well.
Yes, thank you. Several of them were actually included in my presentation. In any case, I'd also, we have Darren Lewis here to assist. There we go. As Mr Tate pointed out, it does come to a surprise to many that while the county council as a transport authority has responsibility for the bus poles, the timetable cases and passenger information, the provision of bus shelters is actually the responsibility of parish or district councils. So in our capacity as a parish part of the city council, it does fall as a town forum responsibility. As has been mentioned as well, the town forum has responsibility for sixty-two bus shelters across the five town wards, and in addition, a number of bus shelters in prominent locations across the town are cleaned and maintained by the company Clear Channel in exchange for displaying advertising on them. Clear Channel, or its predecessor, did actually put those bus shelters in, and they effectively have taken responsibility for them. The current budget of ten thousand pounds is sufficient to clean and carry out routine maintenance of bus shelters, but not to replace them. We have reached a point where the bus shelters have reached their end of life, with some needing replacement or significant repair. So an additional annual budget of ten thousand pounds would be sufficient to slowly repair and replace the worst shelters over the next five years. Without additional funding, I'm afraid we will reach a point where we do need to start removing shelters altogether. The issue of the shelters in City Road has been raised. Those shelters are Clear Channel bus shelters. I think we recognise, and indeed I was called by the very same resident in regard to those shelters today, as on a number of previous occasions, about removing the shelter in front of his commercial property, although he also wants the traffic sign removed, which is definitely not our responsibility. We are asking Clear Channel to have a look at those shelters. I think they are getting rather tired and in need of replacement, and I think that is an opportunity to view the situation. One thing that is important to remember, though, is that while it may seem that some of these bus shelters are underused, not only are bus companies currently still running a reduced timetable due to their difficulty getting staff, but we are anticipating an increase in bus services running up City Road and past those bus stops. So we do need to carefully consider the capacity for passengers to wait in what is one of our city's very busy streets, as the route from the station to Limans Town. It's frequently absolutely packed with pedestrians, and it's a matter for us to consider. In terms of additional bus shelters, I think it's important that, a bit like we were talking about playparks earlier, that we have routine budgets available for something which now is going to be expenditure. However, of course, it is possible for us to use our SIL funding to put in extra bus shelters, but we do have to recognise that every additional shelter will create a cost in our maintenance. But it's certainly something that we can consider in particular circumstances. We're bringing this paper forward at the current time while recognising that the town forum has to consider its budget as a whole before it can recommend any growth, but we do have the paper in front of us today, so that it is an issue which you can constantly ask questions about before considering as part. So I don't know if Mr Lewis wants to add anything to that?
A few comments about the City Road shelters, because, again, I've spoken to that resident three times, as has Hampshire, as has Sarah, and we did speak to Clear Channel and Hampshire County Council. Both expressed the opinion that shelters were a good number of that location. However, there is some movement in so much that they want to change the design because they can't maintain them anymore. A design that you can't get the parts of anymore. So at the moment, they've got solid panels with sort of paper advertising, they want to go to digital advertising. They want to remove the solid panels and replace them with clear panels. But also, they want to replace them with, at the moment, they're three-panel in size, they want to reduce them to two-panel. We've got no date when they're doing that, because it's part of a national programme, mental change in the way advertising is done, but it is their intention to reduce the size and the design of them, of course. Otherwise?
Very good. Well, thank you for a very informative paper. And we are asked to consider the additional revenue budget of ten thousand pounds to refurbish and replace, oops, to get next year. Any...
No question, we need to invest in our bus shelters. At the same time, we've just heard money is tight. Why the cost of maintaining and replacing these shelters? Why is it being charged to the town rather? Many of the shelters, especially those in and around the city centre, are used predominantly by residents from outside of the town area, right across the district. They are district infrastructure, so why aren't we paying for them? Secondly, given the budgetary pressures, have we explored the possibility of extending our cooperation with Clear Channel and perhaps also with the bus companies themselves to share more equitably the cost of fixing and replacing shelters? Finally, third question, good to hear that SIL funds may be used to replace shelters. They are important pieces of community infrastructure, they're being more intensively used, in part as a result of development and greater house building. So there seems to be a good case for using SIL funds more widely to pay capital costs. Perhaps SIL funds to a greater extent.
councillor Lernery, please.
Thank you. As I said, it is a parish or district responsibility, but you do need to be consistent across the area, either the district takes responsibility for all of the parishes do, the town budget parish portion effectively in this context. The parishes do all look after their own bus shelters, the district doesn't fund them for anybody else. So it would be really difficult for the district to look at just in the town. I think we recognise that they are heavily used, but I think it's also recognised that a bus shelter in a village which is only used by the local residents will have pretty much the same wear and tear as a bus shelter that's in the town because of the weather and aging. So while I understand the point, I don't think it's our responsibility to pay.
Darren, is there something you wanted to add, or I see your microphone is on.
Just to add that Clear Channel putting in extra bus shelters is very unlikely, because obviously they get their money from advertising. They only target very, very busy sites, basically. They've never put a bus stop in Denmead or very, very busy cities. Obviously, they are already, thankfully. They're reducing their outlays because their advertising...
I think we will still ask the question.
We'll ask the question, and I don't think anybody's approached...
Becca.
Thank you, and thank you for this paper. Who knew that bus shelters were so exciting? A lot of questions, sort of a little bit disappointed about the way the public sector quality duties is dealt. I know this isn't your paper, Darren, but is dealt with, because I would have thought that bus shelters actually have a very... The duty works both ways, it's both negative impact and positive impact, and I think bus shelters actually offer a really important service, because they provide people who aren't able to drive with somewhere to wait for a bus, people who may not be able to stand for very long, children who are wet, get sick, need somewhere to sit. So it would be really good, you know, would you agree that it would be helpful if that would be brought out more, the benefits of upgrading the bus shelters and replacing the bus shelters, and the importance of bus shelters to residents, not just as infrastructure, but something with an actual, real-life benefit? Second question was, where we replace the bus shelters? Do we do it like-for-like, or is it a... Or do we have a standard, will we have a standard design that we then go and replace the shelters with? Again, this comes from a qualities perspective, because I know some of the shelters that we have don't have proper seats, which people with some physical disabilities find very difficult, because they have those tilting bars which you can't actually sit on very well, and for people with balance issues, that's very, very... And children can't sit on them because they fall right off. My son likes to play with mine. Thanks.
They're not replaced like-for-like, because the modern shelters are much stronger, much cheaper, much better built, much durable materials, for example. We'd also try to go towards green roofs on them as well. So we wouldn't replace like-for-like. Certainly, the older designs, they wouldn't meet the current standards. We wouldn't replace like-for-like.
Music to my ears. And absolutely, around the public sector equality duty, they are an important... Which is why ideally we'd replace them rather than move them.
And councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Chair. And I think councillor Becca has covered part of what I was going to ask. In terms of the bus shelters, you've talked about green roofs, you said that they will be more durable materials, and bus shelters as well as keeping them dry and changed. So the green roofs are a problem. Just with that in mind, at the moment, we're looking at this budget and we're saying, it's a budget we have to make. We also want to be looking at bus shelters with a view to, we could replace some, which would actually help us achieve our aims, like the ones, you know, a whole bus shelter. It might encourage more people to wait for the bus, you know, or they might feel safer if they're lit. I know we don't have any money, but it's that broader aim, thinking about, you know, getting out of their car to publish.
I mean, at the moment, it is a maintenance budget. Ideally, we'd be looking, we've got about sixty shelters, they last about thirty, ideally be looking at, in the current climate, that's basically looking at sweating the assets that we have. Which can be done, because most of them are quite modular, you've got glass panels, metal bars, a lot of them are still in manufacture, you can, obviously, we've got some issues at the moment, also, at the moment, keeping the one going.
Yeah, I think it's worth adding that in carbon terms, obviously, it's better to end and keep them going as much as possible, but obviously, there is a limit to that. The other thing I'd add about the green roofs is that while it's something that ideally we will put in, bus shelters do need to have a half panel at least to provide extra structural support on the, for the roof, so it's not possible to have a simple canopy shelter, and they also need to be in sunlight for seventy percent of the time. So there are areas where you might have the most available, shaded, where it won't be possible, but that certainly is the kind of thing we're looking at.
Thank you. councillor Batho, please.
Thank you, Chair. Just picking up on the point that... ...hoping for some replacement by the, by Clear Channel, the city, an opportunity to be working with them. I'd say no, because they can't get those parts anymore, which is why they're replacing the asset that we can't...
Thank you. And councillor Tippie Cooper?
Similar questions, exploring Clear Channel's role a little bit, I suppose. It was noted from the Hampshire Chronicle article about, spokesman for them said a large portion of revenue is driven by the advertising that goes back into cleaning, the maintenance of the city. Is this money that we're allocating here in addition to what Clear Channel already do, or are they doing enough? Can they be made? I just need to...
The agreement at the moment is what's called a BAFTA contract. BAFTA contract, basically, we've given them permission to unmaintain and advertise. The money we're talking about here is purely for the sixty-two.
Is there something we can, is there something of value for all of this?
No, just clarifying, that basically, think of them as two wholly different sets of bus stops, in terms of their management, bus shelters. There are Clear Channel bus shelters, we basically give them permission, say, you can go here, they then install the bus shelter, clean it, maintain it, remove graffiti, which I've got them to do in the past, run the ads, sell the ads, take the surplus that they make, and they just do their bus stops, and they don't go near, touch, have anything to do with our bus stops. And in return, we look after our bus stops, and we pay for those, clean those, maintain those, remove graffiti, whatever else it is. Think of them as, while the decision to let them do that is our decision, that there is no overlap in terms of spending or money... That there is no overlap in terms of spending or money or the deal is you let us put in a bus stop and we'll clean and maintain it. I'm sure in some places there's a financial arrangement and other such things, but fundamentally, it will never go beyond their own bus stop. That's the setup. I mean, I still think the idea of having a conversation about what they are, because one of the things that's interesting is given that they are advertising funded, what we know is that Winchester delivers very high advertising value advertisers. Lot of people want to advertise in Winchester. That many places where you get outdoor advertising. We need to make sure that we drive a hard bargain when we talk to them. Because, you know, it's it's numbers of people, spending power of those people, they spend on which advertisers are saying, we want to reach the kind of people who go past these bus stops. Advertisers don't buy numbers. They buy target demographic and they pay more certain types of target demographics. So we need to be aware of the strength of our bargaining position when we talk.
I think we moved into some very helpful debate there actually. But James, you've got councillor Batho, do you have a question?
Picking up on councillor Todd. Two of the bus stops that are in placements Andover Road, both of which I think serve these that large number. I would think that might be an interesting demographic for Clear Channel. Them picking those two up as part of their portfolio rather than us funds out of our.
As I said, we will definitely ask the question about whether they'd be interested in looking at more. I think one issue around those Andover Road ones is both on very narrow pavements. So the design of the shelter is fairly limited. Essentially, you can only get a basic canopy structure in there. So on a relatively fast moving road as opposed to City Road where cars are constantly stuck right next to the bus shelters, where you can't get one that faces into the road, I think it will be quite difficult to get them to take that on. But we will absolutely ask the question because road into the city.
I hadn't quite imagined they'd be quite so much interested in bus shelters. Time is moving, but I think this has been a very constructive and helpful conversation. We've moved into a little bit of debate. Any more questions or debates on this in particular? And councillor Reech?
More debates than questions. I think I'd just like to note that in the year ending, April 2022, Stagecoach made £57.9 million from their services outside of London. I noticed some scepticism about whether they would contribute to a bus shelter, but I also noticed, noted councillor Ferguson's comment that comfortable and safe place to wait for a bus surely would drive demand. I just find it remarkable that they won't put their hands on that.
Thank you councillor Reech. A very appropriate comment for debate, I think there. I think it's probably gone beyond what we were asked for in terms of considering the budget increased to 10,000. I think it's come up with some very innovative and challenging opportunities to explore, but also really highlighted the value of bus shelters and the importance of bus shelters if we want to get people using public transport. So I think a very valuable discussion there. And unless anybody has anything else. I think we can hopefully councillor Lerni and Darren, you've had enough contributions here from us today. And hopefully you can take away some of the rest from this group. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Do we want to note this paper? Just so there's an outcome.
Very good. Thank you councillor Lerni. I propose that we formally note this paper and looking for all in agreement, please.
Agreed.
Thank you. That takes us to item number eight, which is the tree strategy cab 3351. And councillor Lerni, I believe this is one of yours perhaps?
And this time I have Ivan Girdler and Steve Lincoln to assist me. So the tree strategy has been brought to the town forum because of the need to consider additional funding to look after trees in the town area. I think this strategy has is probably one of the longest germination periods of any paper I'm aware of in the council. It was actually first started in 2005 when I was in my early years as a member of cabinet at the time, revisited in 2010. And now we've finally got to the point where we've got a fully grown strategy, if you like, which brings all our tree policies into one place. Trees are really important to our residents. They strongly value the visual amenity, the impact on air temperature and air quality, and the health and wellbeing impacts of both rural and urban trees. As a council, we've made commitments through the Carbon Neutrality Action Plan and biodiversity action plan to look after our existing woodlands and trees and expand tree coverage. The strategy sets out how we will do that, not only on our own land, but where we have regulatory power or influence over others. It takes many years, certainly over a decade, for trees to reach the point where they reach a carbon positive position. And looking after our existing trees is of paramount importance. In this, we're facing considerable challenges. Ash dieback will devastate many local areas of woodland, including some owned by the council. Climate change is putting particular varieties of trees under extreme stress and allowing formerly rare tree pests and diseases to thrive. The strategy sets out an approach where only essential works are undertaken to existing trees. Careful consideration is given to where we plant and what we plant, to maximise biodiversity, carbon capture, and the resilience of our wooded areas. While the tree strategy sets out formally how and why we will manage trees in our district, the additional budget is actually associated not with changes in management, but the basic work to ensure that our trees are safe and that we're meeting our legal requirements. We have an increase in the amount of essential tree work that needs to be undertaken and inflation has increased the cost of what so that's why we're coming to you today with the request for additional funding. Clearly, the tree strategy sets out the background of how important trees are to our district how we're planning to look after them. And we welcome questions on either issue. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Lerni for bringing this very important paper to us. So I'd like to for questions, please. And councillor Thompson.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yes, of course, it's really important to look after those 32,000 trees of trees that we need to end. And having had one in my garden it fell down and cut up and taken away. Know how devastating that can be in terms of safety. Safety. So I'm just wondering whether this, obviously, these are trees that are on our land that trees that are on in gardens. I often get complaints from a tree. Anyway, and then would this cover that sort of?
The idea of the strategy is to give them some guidance on and also action trio. So as you know, it shows you can so us where it is keeping that record.
Councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just have didn't do the work. Thank you.
We're not able to estimate how far the ash dieback is going to go. You know, we the council trees. But with the tree survey is that we're out looking at trees structural faults and like if you get included unions is reducing them trees to keep them landscape. Let them just grow and fall apart. Spectres that need to look to see obvious defects. Just to try and retain there's always going to be trees that will go over. Part would know it as nature you do. But you know, you sort of, if we see that water lane, the willows at Water Lane need repollarding to keep them. If we didn't repollard them, they'd fall apart in the river. That could damage the city. Rip the tree to bits, pollarded and before it rips the tree apart, the tree will re-shoot and stay
Thank you for that. And I note in the paper, the additional funds should die back.
Today, the funding for, in recent times, the replacement, the funding for replacing new trees has come through the climate emergency budget. It is something that we need keep an eye on because planting new trees brings with its ongoing revenue pressures as well in terms of some fairly intensive after in error. That they last and survive to maturity. That is something I think we're going to have to look at and consider just to make sure we look out of as well. Obviously, the Ivan, maybe even say a bit more, but the the sort of emergence of ash dieback is creating a sort of considerable challenge. I mean, I've just sort of explained the numbers that might be affected. Until now, we really haven't been having to think about replacement on that scale. So again, that presents a very different challenge to what we might have been facing up until now. So another challenge for us to look at. That's a whole new scale of essential tree replacement. If the desire was to well, if if ash dieback affects 95% that Ivan thinks it might do, and the desire is to maintain the tree stock at its current levels, then we'll have to come and have a conversation with somebody about where that funding might come from. And at the moment, we've not really that level of detail and thought that far forward. But there will be a challenge at some point if we want to maintain stocks at that level. Face the numbers that ash dieback might so yeah. Down the line there.
Any further questions? Councillor Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Thanks, Ivan, for your presentation. Time is spent on
We have one full time officer that fills a TPO TPC applications to, you know, they come through. We also both will go and issue tree preservation orders as needed. It depends on how many but there's quite, you know, quite a number of our time, I can't put a percentage on, but quite a number of our time is taking up, not just our time, but also legal's time in, you know, taking the TPO. So there is fair amount of time on the running side of part of a residents. Yeah, we have set up a thing on the website where they can contact the council. We're the hep meeting last to if we could have like a web that people can contact and go straight through to the inbox. Which they have picked up on. So in a week, there's people manning that inbox for us to respond to that. So we'll go out and have a look and see what the problem is and act on upon what we see.
Can I just add to that, Chair? Sorry. It's a really important point and the whole purpose of the TPOs is clearly to protect those trees. So councillor Scott's point about, you know, our need to be rigorous and follow those up. But it's also important to note that it's also important to note that following up on that does take a significant amount of officer time. And Ivan, there's been an example lately of a really significant breach that Ivan and the team have been following through and that's taken up a huge amount of time of him and the legal team. So, you know, it's really important work that we do. But when we follow that up there are significant capacity pressures placed on by that as well.
Just add to that that this particular case at the moment was spent 572 hours. In, you know, 80% of our time.
Councillor Tippickoper, please.
Surprised me, Ivan. I can imagine. I work in the legal profession. I know that such take a very long time. I suspect contribution very, very, very valuable. I suppose to quicken up a point that Steve mentioned, Lincoln mentioned that new trees require a lot of intensive work and is this enough in terms of together? And does it meet the the demand we have and the climate emergency paper? I suppose that's a pretty controversial question in a way, but are you going to be able to deliver? I suppose, have you got enough to deliver what
The planting of new trees at the moment, we are sort of looking at obviously there is quite a lot of money to spend to maintain them. Sort of looking at that and there. But we see that want to plant not sustainable, bigger trees so they don't get vandalised. Obviously, bigger trees need more maintenance. More water in particular. This last summer, we've just had better up the watering because obviously we don't want to lose the trees after our money to plant them. So as it comes.
I can just add to that, Chair. I think what we've tried to do in terms of presenting this paper and the potential implications that go with it is almost separate out that issue of the essential maintenance around existing tree stock, which most essential tree, you know, there's no way of avoiding it. Clearly, the issue of planting new trees and then maturity is effectively a discretionary thing. Understand completely, we reckon the importance but it is a discretionary thing. So in the interest of trying to clarify the thinking around So in the interest of trying to clarify the thinking around addressing the budget pressures, we can separate the two.
Very good. Are any further questions, please? Not, then move to debate.
Not really debate, I just wanted to say a huge thank you to you for this paper and for the work that you do in this area. I live on Water Lane, so I know the effort you go to to save those, those willow trees and the amazing effort that you put in. I think people don't necessarily see it. When, when something does fall into the river within, I think it was within 20 minutes last time you were there cleaning it up in the water, pulling it all out. And not, and for one of those trees, the, right. The trunk snapped, basically, it just, the entire body of the tree snapped and that's it, they're going to remove the tree. Didn't, you left the trunk and it has bloomed into this beautiful green vibrant, it, it doesn't look like a willow tree really, but it, it looks beautiful and it's still providing the wildlife and the habitat that it needs to. So I think everyone just really needs to see the work and the love for the trees that these guys have throughout the district.
Thank you very much. And councillor Tzipikouba.
Yeah, absolutely, would echo councillor Becker's comments there, Ivan's, you and the team. I think comment was made at the beginning, I think by councillor Thompson, that people are very passionate about trees and it's great, and rightly so, they have an absolute mental part to play in tackling the climate emergency and achieving our goals in that regard. I think this paper makes absolute sense, the work you, your team do is. And I know you could. That's the example of that. So this paper really does show that council's fully committed to maintaining, preserving and enhancing.
Scott.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This really has some. Trees. Program. To the action. Ivan's been patient with. Six minutes, Ivan at his best. Seeing it first half. Sheer nature of Ivan.
Councillor Scott. Just to, you know, that, that was, a builder had a digger under some trees and was scraping the tops or back of the roots. Stop and remove the digger from under the tree, which he did do. And then I spoke to his boss on Monday when he came back, actually did. Band did work from the road, but yeah, he was scraping soil back which was damaged because roots are sort of very shallow. Sat under the trees of the dig. Now, they are old trees, so damage on that, they don't recover. In there. Is 20 minutes he could. Stop in. Damage.
Thank you. And councillor Ferguson.
Thank you, Chair. I just really wanted to say that the things that's striking about, I think, that the area that we're. Use up to any of the high points. Anyways, define our land, the management, these main. Important, not just for environmental grounds and all that spoken of, just in terms of the beauty of our city to maintain. I am cognizant of the town count. Quite a significant additional spend. And we can't. Just want us to be aware and. If there is likely to be another. Replacement trees. That is, as we look. Just work. Going to be for the.
Very good, thank you councillor Ferguson. I'm looking around, but otherwise. I'm up to some degree. I think, just the last point, I think it's, it's helpful to have the separation, you mentioned, Steve, between what's required immediately to preserve the trees that we have and to manage the trees that we have, then separately, did what is needed investment based into. We, we have been asked to consider immediate piece of funds from this year under item one of 21,864. You'll recall that was issued by Darren in Chitt, discussed under item. Or six. There's that piece there. And then a second point around option two or item two, we agree the budget for 11,864 next year onwards. I don't know that we can agree both of those at once, so I'm going to take each of those in turn, one and then two for us to review and agree on. But I think before we do that, I would just like to echo everyone's thanks to you and your team, Ivan. I think hopefully you, I think you do, I think you get how important you and your team are to Winchester, and how grateful we are that you're here delivering and supporting our trees. But thank you, but I'm sure you, you get that. But could we move to item, to recommendations and item one? And if I can propose that we agree the overspend estimate of 21,864 for tree works from this year's budget, please? Agree. Then item two, that we ask informal council group and Darren to consider, the amount of 11,864 for the budget 23. That, that needs to be. Back to us. I propose that, is that agreed? Very good, thank you, everyone. Which then moves us on to item nine and the local plan update, regulation 18, public consultation. Presentation from Adrian Fox, please. So just as, just briefly, Adrian, this is a presentation that you're going to be obviously providing, and then you're looking for comments from us in this presentation?
Right, good evening, Chair, good evening, members and members of public. Yes, I'm going to go through a presentation on the regulation 18, local plan. I'm going to highlight the main changes to this plan, which we're consulting on at the moment. And then I think obviously it's for you to ask any questions that you made, and obviously I will try my best to answer them. Then I think obviously it's for you as a town forum to consider your response. Do that, not like, but obviously. Okay, I'm going to go. Okay, so we put a lot of effort into the draft regulation 18 to make it more visually inviting and hopefully accessible to a wide range of people and. Sounds at my O level, Mark came in very handy to. It is obviously based on your place, your plan, which obviously picks up on the budget issues and priorities. And the key dates are, we're consulting as from last week, from the 2nd of December till the 14th of December, and that's the closing date for us. This staircase kind of outlines where we are, up the staircase, so we've obviously consulted on the SIP. Now obviously have your say on draft local plan, and then obviously we've got to refine our local plan and come out with the next version of local. Terminology, that's. Then we head to. We have in the local plan, a vision for the local plan, I'm not intended to read that out, it's in the presentation. And that's, the way I describe it is if you're a kind of spaceman looking towards the future to 2039, you're looking back on how we want the district to obviously grow and develop. This is obviously the characteristics of it. And within them, we've got sub kind of visions, Hamptotown Winchester and the South Hampshire urban area. At the heart of the new local plan is the climate emergency, and around that climate emergency, we've got several topics, and I'll run through those individually fairly rapid space, time. But at the heart of it and the defining issue is the. The local plan is structured around those topics, and within those topics, you've got a strategic overarching policy, which obviously builds on the key issues related to that topic. You've then got what we call development management policy sitting behind that, then obviously we've got. So we kick off with obviously the most important issue in terms of obviously where we're at in terms of climate emergency, in terms of carbon neutrality. The main thing is, we've tried to divide it up into how you can mitigate and adapt to climate change, and obviously the local plan has a really key role in obviously delivering obviously the climate emergency. Net zero carbon 30, but it's not the only tool. The good news is that the Planning and Environment Energy Act does allow local plans to set local standards for energy efficiency over and above those in building actions, but that is subject to local. So we have introduced a new policy CN3, which requires residential development to use a total energy use. 75 kilowatts. For anybody who's used to reading their meter at home, it's exactly the same way. And we feel it's a very straightforward and transparent way of managing efficiency of the home. At the moment, the building regulations talk about 75% less than this and whatever. Simpler way. Looking at how energy efficiency. Key thing is that. No fossil fuel. We are going for what's called R E M excellent residential, and there's another policies in this topic that deal with climate change. All emphasis of this must address this as. In terms of obviously the next topic, high quality and well-designed places, key part of this is the design process. Way I describe it is, when you're in the design process, what I want you to do is put on three hats, so climate emergency hat, think about your design. Play out the orientation. Ability hat, look out how you're going to link that side. That filters through the whole. Process rather than. So we've done that, that builds on the work that we did with design southeast and town forum, basically about how we can raise. Main thought point is that that design process filters through the whole of the local. There's an illustration on this one about how the design process. That mitigation and adaption for climate change, and that just shows how central the design process. Point developed to is document clearly that design process, rather than coming to easier answer, how did you get about that design? Sustainable transport, we've had a good discussion on bus stops tonight, and obviously we're prioritizing obviously the use of sustainable mode of transport, and a key part of that is making sure our development is around the public. In other words, they are linked to public transports, it's not down some dark alley, it's basically a critical part of the process. And basically making sure that obviously we can support obviously the concept of 18-minute neighbourhoods, where that is a. Plan area. Another defining part of the local plan, regulation 18 local plan, is that we are getting away with car parking. Car parking standards don't fit with obviously the climate. So there should not be a defining issue in the design, but again justify how you need voting, obviously. That's a fundamental shift in terms. Biodiversity and the natural environment, that is another topic. Basically, a key part of this is, we're going to go around food first, second, there's changes in legislation regarding biodiversity gain, so we picked that, the use of basically multi. And obviously the local plan has to kind of balance those kind of commuting requirements on the natural environment and biodiversity. Need development, we want development, but how can you do that in a way that obviously? Number of policies in the local. Probably aware in terms of the district, in terms of the matrix and phosphates history, basically we've got. Historic environment is obviously a key defining issue, obviously. So great. District as a whole, replaceable assets, so we is in there to protect and enhance the environment. And more importantly, obviously, how does it treat obviously the historic environment improvements to listed buildings pick up the clock? That's obviously a really difficult challenge often. The solution may not be just troubleblazing. Outside the box in terms of how you can prove other measures in a building that may not be so obvious. Windows to. So it's basically thinking differently about how we. Homes for all is obviously a key topic in the local plan, but not the only topic, and obviously, big that obviously generates probably the most amount of comment. We've got to obviously identify land to meet what's called our standard methodology, which moment is set at seven. Unfortunately, that calculation changes each year. Changes each year with. Ability ratio, so how affordable they are. There, that obviously district was obviously. Districts and houses. So that changes, that figure that we've got for the standard methodology doesn't get set or known until the regulation 19. So we've had to obviously look at the responses from the strategic issues. Growth strategy, and we've identified a growth strategy based on feedback from that and our sustainability approach. By. Process. Basically, it's a continuation of existing strategy, having included other sustainable. Have carried forward a number of existing allocations under construction. That's mainly to make sure that obviously the brevity of those control in terms. Also made an allowance for windfield development and windfall. That's obviously. That's obviously... So in this section of the local plan, we do obviously kind of set out obviously our locations, our permissions, our... And our net new sites that we're allocating. Must also remember that we must consider the needs for travelers, we've completed a Gipses Traveler kind of... Important part for the plan, or that previously obviously separate development... So in terms of obviously, factors have changed, development economics have changed in terms of the last local plan, there's new challenges in terms of delivering residential development outside the councils, because we need to mitigate obviously the impact of protected sites and deal with nitrates and... We also obviously need to balance that with the climate emergency and the... And obviously, deal with obviously the most pressing need, which is obviously affordable housing. Now, the way I describe this is, there's a cake or pie, there is only so many slices out of this cake or pie before basically a site is viable, part of this local plan. Forms basically all of them, any policy cost implication needs to be assessed, so they clearly have vehicle cost, building regs, they have a cost, and obviously you can see that obviously the cake or pie has that number of slices out of it, possibly a few one, so what's left? Very clear that we want to start with 40% affordable housing, but in the policy, we have said about brownfield land, greenfield land, phosphate, hopefully then phosphate is addressed by... Cost will... That local plan... Okay, creating vibrant economy is the last topic in the plan, but not... We've got to pick up on obviously how people's shopping habits have changed throughout obviously the local plan period, and more recently, as we've... There's been changes in the use class order, and obviously doing more online shopping, high streets, but obviously fundamentally, how do we support the high streets, it's placing that kind of town centre. Point on traditional, if I could, shopping, things it's been put for, be part of obviously Brook Centre, we want... So how can we support the local plan? Local plan can support the green economic development strategy, that's a critical part of it, and we are just in the process of going out tender to update what we... Retail and... Look at obviously change, that's why that work will be needed to be assessed. Got a clear section now on the local plan's allocation strategy, and issues on basically moment with planning permissions, phosphates and nitrates. We are seeking to maintain obviously fundamentally a really important thing about five-year housing land supply, and we're trying to phase development, so we want basically the allocated sites, brownfield sites to come for the greenfields. In terms of Winchester Town, there's a table, I'm not going to break through the allocations that we've got and what carry forward and the new sites. That on the presentation shows it, clearly the largest allocation was Barracks, which is a very much on the case of master plan led development, like their past farm, but obviously the allocations for the centre station approach have gone in the middle, there's area allocated, student count. Then to the south, there we've got the camp. So how to get involved, really want everybody to read the local plan. I make my bones that obviously is a big goal, done to help people is, we've split up the top six on the easy to read, we are producing an easy to read version, same for the... And the age we're at, it's very important that we, we've drafted the policies, what we want to know is, do you agree with that policy? Don't agree with it? How does that policy... Every single policy in the local plan, that's the only answer that we... Very clear that that's, that's the key that we need to... All the comments, once we receive them, have got to be analysed by my team, they've then got to be reported back to the group and cabinet, and obviously to reduce the Reg 19. Reg 19 plan is your plan that you want the Secretary of State for examination, that's got to be... So in terms of obviously how to get involved, I did our first drop-in session today, we've got Northland, Metalside, Station Centre, and those are the dates of the other drop-in sessions, we're encouraging people to come on, theme about the local plan. I would really encourage you as members to come along to those events, and also to register to come to this one event, first one next week, which is the local plan. We've got guest speakers talking at that, if you go to the new local plan website, register to that event, and on the 23rd of November, we've brought another specialist event, the Energy Efficiency... Do register, guest speakers will prove... Please do register, send the message to anybody. So we are trying to channel all comments through the citizen space, and it's really important to get across to members to help us do that. Why are we doing that? Doing that so that my team don't misinterpret what you're saying. If people send us a 28-page letter, we go through that letter, try to work out what they are actually saying, are they saying the policy that, about a policy, are they just saying the general... And I will everything through citizen's page, run the report easier, and I can take together common points about a policy, prove it, we do want to improve it. There is improvement to it. We produced this very short video via Beth in my team's website, literally talks you through how easy it is to do it, so please look at that video, please help me... QR code, which is great to... We've also done a lot of work on the new local plan website, and the website's got more easier, user-friendly, so again, please help me get the message out, find out information. Spend a lot of time on that, please make sure that you use that. And just finally, appreciate that, a whistle-stop tour, but please make sure that we get comments.
Thank you, Adrian, very whistle-stop tour, as you're saying, but very helpful. We don't have the time, and I don't think it was your intention, Adrian, to make questions on the local plan, Reg 18 itself, and the site allocations being developed, or I would suggest an education on the consultation process, and making sure the members are aware of that, they're getting our support for socialising this and making people aware of how they can put contributions into consultation process. As you say, citizen space, for us in the town, I would suggest it's the 22nd of November, residents at the St Giles Sweet Mercure Winchester Wessex Hotel, 22nd of November. So if people have questions on the consultation process itself, I think that's probably appropriate, as you suggested in your introduction, what you would expect and what is appropriate, that the town forum, the whole, put a vision into that consultation process, and that I suggest would be through the town informal group on the future Winchester Town Plan, so we have a informal group for that, so that would be the mechanism which we would get to you. So with that in mind, I'll reserve comments further, but does anybody have any questions, Adrian? councillor Ferguson, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Fox, again, for the presentation, actually, it was built into... Just wanted to know how we play a little bit more, as the Reg 8 being launched, and I know that we can try and help, already are, I'm already doing... But I was interested today that I spoke to a resident where they have... And the comment was that lots of people commenting on the town... Only the group WhatsApp group, my concern is that people will think, what, on the WhatsApp group, this has taken part in the... Pointing out to the particular residents, they needed to go on... Go on those comments. They also had comments, if they're going... What are we doing to... You know, they need to...
Thank you councillor Ferguson, yeah, really interesting, obviously I've not heard of that one, so in terms of what we're doing, we've publicised it as widely as I can, we reviewed what we did in the SIP consultation, and I added to that, so basically it's advertised on six radio stations in the district, plus Winchester News Radio, advertised in three newspapers at the beginning part of the consultation, it would be advertised again at the middle and end, towards the end of the consultation. We've contacted all parish councils and provided them with posters to tell people, we've provided them with news, kind of short, kind of news article, news, and obviously we've publicised it widely on our website itself. I really hope that people kind of know that it's happening, shout as much as they can that it can happen, and we're open to ideas, we've got a consultation calendar on the website that basically about what we're doing and all the locations, where we can go. Like I said, there's posters on the parking meters, there's posters at sheltered housing, we've literally kind of literally done a brainstorm, what else we can do, things my team can do, get the message out, obviously what we can't do is a kind of citywide mail drop, a video, things like that, obviously there's more things my team can do to announce it, I'm more than happy for ideas. More comprehensive than what we're giving them the SIP, really hoping the message is encouraged, have those conversations on what, making sure that they do. Open the video and we do need advertising on Facebook, Twitter, website, numerous things I'm doing in terms of trying to, yeah, welcome more ideas if there's something you want. We've contacted the lead at Hampshire County Council on schools and given them this short article, distribute to schools, what... In terms of supermarkets, last time we did send posters to supermarkets, I never saw any up at all, now whether or not they were up in the bathroom, I don't know, but took the view in terms of obviously what's going to be the biggest bang for our buck in terms of how can we do it? Good point about supermarkets, I think that's... Last time in the SIP, it was one of the few places you could go out to, in my supermarket con... I didn't actually see any places, I was a bit reluctant because...
Becca?
Thank you, just adding on councillor Ferguson's point, I know that lots, Hampshire, no, who was it, Highways England on the junction nine, they've run lots of consultation events, actually at Tesco, so maybe we could think about having some sort of pop-up, just, not even a consultation event, just to advertise, to tell people that this is going on and at some, at Sainsbury's around the district. I have to say, I dropped off my daughter at gymnastics on Saturday morning and was surprised to see a poster in the window on the gymnastics place, well done for getting it there, no idea how, no idea who, but well done.
Thank you councillor Becca, there's another thing, there's been so much on, yeah, I've just got to mention that councillor, to help me, we have been in contact with the universities because obviously the plan goes to... About doing some events there, certainly with Winchester, do Spar Shop... This week about what we could do there, because of the plan, I'd say it is for them, because it's really, really... We get the message out, you know what I'm saying, it's just basically, it's, I don't say it too much, but you know what I mean, it's for the young people.
Councillor Scott, please.
Yeah, I've got two questions, Chair, one to yourself. Turn to the town forum, what we're going to think about is... When the small question is... All our thoughts in the process, I don't know... I must, going through what's gone through the... If, if this is what you're going to take... Themes and... How you shake that out?
I think there was a question to me which I will answer in terms of, that's some, some of what I wanted to get out of this evening is some thoughts on this process, because the consultation ends before we have our next... So we need to find a mechanism virtually in order to do that, unless we can... But we'll use the mechanism that have groups to do that, as you say, while it can start off with the formal group, it does need to include town forum members, and should, and within that small group initially, it should absolutely include a ward member, one more ward... Ask that you be part of that, which we. But yeah, that's that's how I would imagine that we would work and have to do that outside of the. Probably leads me on to my own here for my age. If we were a parish, we might have a newsletter or emails of our residents. Don't have a own newsletter. So there is a responsibility at a ward level for councillors to use whichever mechanisms that do community to their residents. And we all have our own mechanisms. I would encourage mechanisms. I did a I hosted as town forum chair, a Zoom meeting. I'm just wondering, maybe I'm just thinking, you know, I might do something similar. What access would I have to emails that I could use?
If it would be helpful, Chair, we've we've got this short article about raising the profile of the local plan that we've parish councils and I'm showing mechanism, chat to your local communities. Certainly forward that and then trying to get the standard message. Mark or anything do that for you. It's obviously how how you engage with those. Vision for Winchester. Obviously we've got a, I don't think I can access that in terms. You can in terms of database. Whether or not they are just. Trying to think creatively how we can do that effectively. Open to ideas how how we can help you do that. Events etc. Way that I can help get that message. Please, I'm happy to have that.
Thank you councillor Todd.
A simple check really, which is we we don't currently have the infrastructure to be able to say, can we send emails to a particular part of the district? But we have sent an email to every singular email address that we have in the district. So every single person in the city council area who's given us permission to contact them and in the town forum area has received an email about this. So, you know, we can't do anything special that relates to the town area. It's one of the things that we are going to be looking at in order to be more efficient in terms of how we use our email setup and infrastructure that we're able to send more geographically targeted emails. But at the moment, that infrastructure is not in place. However, if we have an email that we're allowed to contact anywhere in the district, including in the city, they have received information about it.
Very good. Thank you for that answer. And I think councillor Tibi Cooper, please.
No, nothing's been answered. I think I will do my utmost to get the message out, Adrian, even if it means maybe doing a TikTok video, social media form. You've not, the one you've not done yet. And Adrian, it's I think you're going to have to do a live, a live one, Adrian. I put you in, up to it now. Thanks.
We're not going to go into debate necessarily. I think I think we've. Yeah, it's tempting, but I think we've asked a lot of questions. I do just want to thank you for your work, Adrian, you and your team. I think you've put an extraordinary amount of effort into this reg 18. Thank you in particular for the for the active listening that you've done in terms of feedback that town forum members have had and also the residents and professionals across the district. You've laid on a number of events, a number of workshops to encourage that contribution as part of part of the the preparation for the plan. That has resulted without wishing to influence a response that has that has created a local plan that is that has highlighted and provided a focus for Winchester Town, which arguably wasn't there in in the previous plan. So it's very different to the local plan you've created and the space and provision for the town. That I do thank you. So with that, I think we move along to formal group updates. Now, there is, as I said, there is a submission there from the city centre, which I encourage you to review. But I will take the opportunity to allow others to raise any key developments, key notes, which you express verbally from.
I can do, Chair. I must confess, I was late. My homework was late. Sorry, there's no written paper for the town forum. I can do a very quick verbal update on the heritage group and on King Alfred, all works to King Alfred's fleet and the contractors who have visited and taken to the plinth, which is much improved. The city museum, people may have noticed there's some temporary boardings that have been put over some windows. It was identified that those windows needed urgent repairs. Because there was no need to get Historic England involved, work could be done quite quickly, thankfully. And the windows have been taken away, refurbished and hopefully be reinstalled by the end of winter, which is good news. It shows that you can restore things quickly if you want. At the Buttercross, people may have seen a cherry picker undertaking surveys of that structure. Those surveys have been completed and we're awaiting reports from before our consultants we've instructed will be submitting an application to Historic England for works, including repairs, cleaning and pitting. It's very important, obviously, that we. The landmark properly protected. That's the plan there. Very quickly on Hyde Abbey Gateway, obviously a key project for the heritage group. Surveys for the restoration work have been completed and a final report is awaited before that's submitted to Historic England. And so that will be on various restoration repair works, which hopefully should start in spring 2023, subject to Historic England's sense. Be really trying to get that. Public Realm Works would be looking to start around the same time with key pieces of work, including the relaying of the flooring there in the gateway, which would be really important. Pigeon proofing works have been very, very successful with dramatic improvements in recent months from where it was. And a review of that has been conducted this week, in fact, to see where it's at. I'm also very, very pleased to announce there's going to be a deployment of three CCTV cameras in and around the High Gate Sheltered Housing area. That will also benefit the High Gateway with a view to addressing some of the antisocial behaviour in that area that's happened in the past. Hopefully that'll give some reassurance to those living and working in that area. And it's all progress there. Gutters and the downpipes have recently been cleared and repaired and. Good and we're mementing up on that.
Very good. Thank you, councillor. Always nice to hear the progress that's being made. We'll be sure to get that into the report gets published along with the minutes. Councillor Reckitt, please.
Thank you, Chair. I will just on behalf of the informal groups on parks and recreation, give you an update on a couple of points. One is in relation to North Walls River Park. We mentioned it earlier, a technical survey is being commissioned. Look at the extent and the optimal sequencing of the required groundwork to implement the park plan. And that survey will be important in informing our decisions about which elements of the park plan should be brought forward first. It will also help address drainage and related issues. And secondly, on St Giles Hill Park, I'm very pleased to report to forum that work is now progressing well on the new park management plan for St Giles Hill Park in accordance with the town forum's request of January 2022. The new management plan will set out both the ongoing routine maintenance, including tree management, alongside some short term improvements and finally some possible longer term projects for which additional funding will need to be sought. That draft plan will be published in early 2023, at which point there will be a public there will be a public consultation that will give park users opportunity to provide feedback before the the plan is finalized to this forum. And finally, the wonderful tree officers have been conducting tree survey work at St Giles Hill and that tree survey has now been completed, including identifying councillor's response to the present Ash dieback on that site.
Very good. Thank you councillor and to all work on those informal. And so unless there's anything else, we will move to the final point of eleven, the work programme. Just to review the work programme with two things left. This municipal year on 6th of January, 13th of March, 26th of January. Important looking at the budget next year. Very much looking forward to that on the basis of the conversations we've had today, which I think have been very, very constructive, very helpful, despite the challenges that are presented by those budgets. So unless anybody has any further comments, I'd like to thank you this evening. I'm certainly going to be not just feeling immersed in my Winchester-ness and being like I'm going to defend the town against the Viking hordes, but also very much appreciating the bus shelters, trees that we have. So again, thank you all for your time this evening. At the time of 8:52, this meeting is now closed. Many thanks.